Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. Again, if there's any last-minute forms, please bring them up so that our city secretary can hand them over to me. I don't see anything coming up, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start off with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance from our police chief. Will everybody please stand?
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here today. Thank you for continuing to bless our city. Please watch over this body during our meeting tonight. Please watch over everyone as they're going home. Please continue to watch over our men and women in service and our immediate responders, our first responders. These blessings I ask, and thank you for it in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
So, we have a minor change with the roll call, obviously, tonight. Our mayor couldn't be here, but he's definitely in our prayers. He is recovering from a minor surgery. He's actually going to have another surgery in a couple of weeks, but he will be back. And so, this is a temporary change from Mayor Reed to Mayor Pro Tem Reed. With that being said, we'll move on to agenda item number four, citizen comments. And looking through these forms, there are no citizen comments outside of agenda items that are later on in the agenda. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, Councilmember Carbone, will you please present the consent agenda for our consideration?
Thank you. Consideration and possible action approval of consent agenda items A through U, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Secretary, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, which is agenda item number six. And Councilmember Moore, will you please present new business item number one for our consideration?
Number one or six?
New business item number one.
Thank you. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1548, so moved.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Any staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. We would, just for the record, want to make a very brief presentation. Mr. Hardy's going up. We have had two prior official public hearings. We've conducted the notices required by law and answered a number of informal questions, have information on the website. The city is entitled, as part of state law, from time to time to incorporate lands into the city limits as part of our ETJ. We've got five separate areas, and each of those are separate action items for first reading. And then, there's a second reading on the 27th if they move forward from tonight. So, Mr. Hardy can just give you an overview real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Real quickly, we're going to just briefly go over some of the areas and the ordinances that are before you tonight for annexation. This map represents the five areas that we've presented to council and the public for annexation, areas A, C, I, L, and P. All of these areas on this map represent the boundaries inclusive of the parcels of landowners that have been notified by the city of our intent to annex. Here's a calendar of key official activities that have taken place to date. Council on the 31st of August directed staff to develop a service plan and to annex those five areas. We notified the property owners of our intent to annex on September the 1st, 2017. We held a first public hearing on October the 9th, 2017, and a second one on the 16th. And these are both statutorily required for the city to host. And also, we have sent ag-exempt agreements to those property owners that qualify for exemption from the annexation for five years on October the 25th. Those agreements are scheduled to come back to the city on the 17th of November. We have also maintained a significant amount of helpful information, mainly through our annexation webpage, which is at PearlandTX.gov. We've developed a number of frequently asked questions, documents, updated those on a regular basis, and done an addendum after our public hearings to make sure that the public comments that came before council and the public were responded to. We've also had some one-on-one meetings with property owners that have expressed that interest in doing so. And we've conducted a few analyses on some very specific issues, one being the impact of annexation on property values. We've included that in a memo and frequently asked questions, as well as a case statement that was presented last week. We've also responded to the questions about the capacity of the city to provide water and wastewater treatment services and accessibility. Our city engineer and others have done a good job of putting together a concept paper on that as well, which has been presented to council. Just a quick update, around this time last year, we hired, originally hired, C.L. Davis and Associates to begin conducting surveying on some of these areas and expanded that over the course of the last year to include the full group that we have put before council and the public now. That certified survey has been completed. We now have official meets and bounds for the areas to be annexed. The owner verification has been completed by property and land use type. We've also completed the land use survey maps, survey of parcels, and again, the ag-exempt agreements have been sent out to those qualifying property owners. Before you tonight, we have five different ordinances that will represent the relationship between those annexation proposals and the areas to be annexed. Area A is in ordinance 1548, area C in ordinance 1549, area I in ordinance 1550, area L in ordinance 1551, and area P in ordinance 1552. And beyond tonight's consideration and possible action, we do have a second ordinance reading that's required by law that will take place November the 27th. And should the annexation proceed, we do have zoning proceedings that will take place after that into 2018. And that ends my staff report. I'll pass the balance back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there's quite a few people that want to speak tonight to the first five agenda items, or at least three of the first five agenda items. On the speaker registration form, it says that you have three minutes to speak. What I'll do is I'll make sure that, to give you a two-minute warning, let you know that you have one minute left. And then, at three minutes, if there's just a little bit more to wrap up, I'll definitely ask. Otherwise, please be respectful of everybody else that needs to speak, because, you know, there are a lot of folks and want to make sure that people can get home to their children and families and whatnot. So, starting off with number one, I'm sorry, with agenda item number one, new business agenda item number one, area A, the first person that I have is Ms. Hauser, Kaye Hauser? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I think I know the drill. You need my name and address, right?
Yes, ma'am.
28, Kaye Hauser, 2807 Honeysicle, Rosheren, Texas, 77583.
Thank you.
Is that all you need?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I've spoken at the last two hearings or meetings that we've had, and this is the same thing again. You know, we've lived out there 39 years. We, 39 years ago, Pearland didn't want us. So, we set up our own shop, took care of our own selves, set up our water well, our septic tank, been out there 39 years and done just fine. We have sheriff's department that comes out and takes care of us. We have, I know that Councilman Ordno has said that, you know, that he may stop that as far as fire and ambulance. You know, there's no hydrants out there. Unless you have a pumper truck, you're not going to help us anyway. You're going to watch us, watch us watch our house burn. We all are neighbors on that street. We take care of each other. I think that's what each of the areas that you're annexing or trying to annex. It feels like it's a land grab. It feels like it's the wrong thing in a world right now that it's do the right thing, everybody get up and speak out and talk about it, do the right thing. Give us the choice and the chance to vote on this. That's the right thing to do. It feels that this is a wrong situation. And I know that, you know, Senate Bill 6 is a large part of this. Well, that's the reason I'm saying, give us the chance to make this right. You need to make it right. If you're going to represent us, you need to be fair, make it right. Let us vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. The next speaker that I have is Mr. Gerald Hauser, Mr. Hauser?
Hi, my name is Gerard Hauser, 2807 Honeysicle, Rosheren, Texas. I have spoken here before as well. I just want to reiterate that when we moved out to our piece of the country 39 years ago, we moved to Rosheren. We didn't move to Pearland. We didn't move to Houston, and we like where we lived. We did set up everything we do. Nobody gave us anything. If you wanted it, you had to set up for it, and you had to do it on your own with no help. I do feel that this is a land grab that y'all are trying to force upon us. We don't want this. Nobody wants this. We don't have the right to vote. You're not giving us the right to vote. You're telling us, you're outright telling us that we're not going to have any services for a minimum of five years, other than, you're saying fire, and you're saying police. Well, how are you going to put out a fire if you don't have a water hydrant, if you don't have a fire hydrant? We've had the sheriff out there for 39 years. They do a great job. They're a great bunch of officers. I'm not saying anything against Pearland. They're a great group as well. But we're very happy with that, and we don't need Pearland. We don't want Pearland. Finally, I'd just like to wrap up and say that I did email all of the councilmen, and there were a couple of y'all that did respond. There was a few of y'all that did respond to me. A couple of y'all responded to me saying that y'all were going to vote no. And for that, I do appreciate that very much. And for the rest of you, I would like for y'all to continue to give this serious consideration. Don't do something that we don't want. Think about that before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, sir. So, that's the last form that I have for agenda item, new business item, I'm sorry, number one, section A or area A. Are there any comments from council? New business item number one?
Got a question for staff. In terms of the timing that we've had, can you review, I guess, when this area is, whether you want to hit just on A or review all of them, when they were added to the plan, or was it a comprehensive plan?
Yes, those areas were in the comprehensive plan in 2015, when it was updated September the 21st of 2015.
And some were short-term, some were medium, some were long?
Yes, that's correct. A and C were short-term priorities. I and L were medium-term priorities, and P was a long-term priority.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I would just say, you know, the term land grab's been used a lot. I'm sure it'll be used some more. Nobody's going to come in and tell you to get out of your home. We're not taking your property from you. What we're doing is we're taking, we're annexing you into the incorporated part of Pearland city limits. You will still live there. You will still have full rights to your property as you did before. But there are services, and this is where I think fundamentally we disagree, services that are provided to you out into the ETJ that you are not responsible for paying for because you're not in the city limits. Now, we can debate, and I've talked with as many of you as have been willing to listen to me, we can debate that for a while, and I just don't think we're going to agree. But as I sit in this seat, that's how I see it. You know, for those who say, "Well, we don't want your fire protection," I think that would change if your house was on fire. You know, for those of you who say, "Well, you're not going to put a fire truck out there because there's no hydrants." There's two large bodies of water, and we do have a pumper truck, and we will do whatever we can. We'll go out there and try and save your life. We're not going to stop at the city limits and say, "Well, they don't pay taxes, so forget about them." And again, if somebody was kicking your door down and threatening your life, and you called 911, I don't think you'd appreciate it if our cops just stopped at the limits and said, "We're going to wait for the sheriff to get here. We've gone our limit." And when we sit here and have another annex, or another area, Savannah Lakes talked to us about we're in, they're ETJ, and we hold responsibility to them, it's a completely different view of ETJ. It's a completely different view of what City of Pearland's responsibilities are. And look, I'm never going to want to entertain a conversation of where we are not going to try and do everything we can to protect your life, and we're not going to provide the services that I think that y'all deserve. And when we, y'all got incorporated into ETJ in the '60s, we made a commitment to you that we would do that. I fervently believe that's our responsibility. Now, sure, are you going to have the exact same services as you would have if you're in the dead center of Shadow Creek Ranch? No. But they pay more in taxes than you will. So, we are not going to take your land. We are not going to kick you out of your home. We're not going to tell you, "You've got to leave." We're not going to come in and say, "Well, I know you're a residential home, but we're going to zone you industrial, so get out." Nobody is going to take anything from you that belongs to you. Where the disagreement is, is that are these services that you enjoy something that should be provided to you for no cost or for some cost? That really is, that really is the discussion. As I sit here, and for all of you that believe, say, Senate Bill 6 says it's put you into the right to vote, well, where I disagree with what Senate Bill 6 did is, everybody who's affected by that, by an annexation, does not have the right to vote. And Councilmember Ordno and I have both said this. It's not a vote of the entire city limits. If y'all are to be annexed, everybody in the City of Pearland who pays taxes in the City of Pearland, they have now responsibility to you. Their taxes go to serve you, as your taxes go to serve them. They don't have a right to vote on the annexation even after Senate Bill 6 comes. So, if it were a more fair vote, more distributed throughout the entire impacted area, I could certainly agree with the argument that the state made, but I don't agree with what they did. And that's why I think it's important that we make sure that we take care of the responsibilities that we had when we took, when we made commitments to this area in the '60s, to do this now. That's why I will vote on it. I know that y'all don't agree with me. Y'all have every right to not agree with me. And I will still consider everything that you say. I will still listen to you, and after, or if y'all are annexed, I will still continue to serve you before and after y'all are annexed equally. But I just don't agree with y'all's argument that this is a land grab, that you're not getting any services. I just don't think that that's a fair assessment of where y'all are and what y'all are getting.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez. We have a motion and second on the floor.
I got just one question. How many service calls are made to this area? Fire, EMS, or do we even have police if sheriff was not able to respond and calls upon Pearland PD to respond?
I do have that information, Councilmember. Let me pull it up.
Okay.
While Joel's looking that up, I just made a comment that, as council knows, our fire operations, by and large, all their calls are primarily medical responses. So, obviously, fire's a big chunk of their training and operation and capability, but I don't want anybody to forget that ambulance service that we provide is the largest margin quantity of calls.
We have had, since September 21st, 2015, I want to say 30 fire and EMS calls and four police calls to that area.
That's just A.
That's just A. Yes, sir.
Anything else? Councilmember Moore?
No.
So, with that information on the record, we have a motion and second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
We have a 3-3 tie? Four to three, that's right. Yeah, four to three in favor of?
Moving on to new business item number two, Councilmember Ordno, will you please present that for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1549, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Staff report?
Nothing to add, Mayor. This is a very small area, right next to Country Place. So, the reasons have been described, and also recommend, and given for the protections of land use and so forth, next to that established area town, we'd recommend approval of this as well.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council on this item? With hearing none, and with that information on the record, we have a motion and second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving on to new business agenda item number three, Councilmember Little, will you please present that for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1550, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. We have two persons wishing to speak to this area, area I. The first one is Ms. Cynthia Pickett. Thank you for being here today, Ms. Pickett.
Thank you. Good evening. Just as a matter of housekeeping, signed up to speak. Right after me is Kim Hoseal. To the extent that I go over my three minutes, Ms. Hoseal, do you yield your time?
And I do.
Can you please give us your name and address?
Yes. My name is Cynthia Pickett. I am an attorney. I, my address is 5051 Westimer Suite 1200, Houston, Texas, 77056. We represent South Belt Industrial Park, which is, includes properties and industrial businesses in the region you all have designated as Annex Area I. We have reviewed the annexation and all the publicly available information, and there are many illegalities in the process and proposed annexation, which render this vote tonight and the attempts to annex this area I illegal and void, under the state law and under your own charter. The legal errors, which render the continuation of this annexation unauthorized, also give rise to private lawsuits. As we have previously informed you through your counsel, Mr. Hightower, you must also know that you, the city council members, if you proceed with this unauthorized action, you may be personally liable and subject to being personally sued for acting in an ultra-virus manner outside the scope of your authority. Specifically, if you vote for this annexation outside of your authority, you will not be protected by the official immunity from private lawsuits that council members typically enjoy, and legal fees may be recoverable against you. Some of the examples of these illegalities, Pearland failed to serve notice-
We have one minute left, just wanted to let you know.
To the Houston Independent School District under the government code, it's a condition precedent to Pearland's right to continue. You're without authority to continue. It cannot be fixed if you proceed to vote for this annexation. Our client will sue the city council members who vote to do so in the city. Secondly, the letter that was sent out in the annexation notice on September 1st did not provide any notice, sufficient notice of the annexed property in area I as required by this government code. The letter states that Pearland is annexing a part of the area designated as Annexation Area I comprised of 344 acres of land that includes your property. There's no description of area I, no map, no partial information, no address, no legal description. Just recently, last week, the Office of the Attorney General of Texas found that a City of McKinney's notice that was similarly improper and illegal was subject to being voided through a court warrant or proceeding by the state. The mayor and the city council members were notified of that, and they voted no last week. Another one, that every subsequent notice that you have mailed, posted online, or put in the paper, you have defined area I as including 344 acres located north of South Belt Industrial Drive. Not until November the 10th, when you published official notice of this meeting, did you say, for the first time through a meets and bounds legal description, that it also included lands south of South Belt Industrial Drive. These failures to provide timely notice of your intent to annex south of South Belt Industrial Drive do not only violate Chapter 43 of the government code, but they also violate the Open Meetings Act because the subject was not included in the notices for the two public hearings. Consequently, Pearland's failure to act in compliance with state law constitutes a violation of its own charter, which requires such compliance, which makes your actions unprovised if you proceed tonight.
Ma'am, you have two minutes of Ms. Hoseal's time left.
Thank you.
So, she's yielding you her time, I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah. For all of these reasons and more, some of which will be described in the letter we're going to hand up after this, after this meeting, Pearland does not have the legal authority to proceed with this annexation. Should the council members do so, despite the lack of authority, they will be acting ultra-virus. As such, the City of Pearland and each council member who votes to proceed will have potential individual liability for their ultra-virus act, including attorney's fees. No official immunity will apply. This association is prepared, our client is prepared to file this suit to enjoin this illegal unauthorized action, and if you vote to proceed tonight to do so, that suit will be filed forthcoming and immediately. We, and we will be suing each of you who vote to do so in your individual capacity, and we will also be seeking to recover attorney's fees as authorized under the government code.
One minute left.
You can avoid all of this by voting no and rejecting the proposed illegal annexation in this meeting tonight. On behalf of our client, South Belt Industrial Park Association, we respectfully request that you vote no tonight. As, and that you direct your city home office, your staff, not to proceed with further annexation until they comply with all requirements of your charter and your state law. As Councilman Woody Owens said in the last October public hearing, any time is a good time to stop a bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. With that information on the record, are there any comments from council? Hearing none. Mr. Secretary, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Little?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed six to one.
Thank you. Moving on to new business item number three, Councilmember Little, will you please present this for our consideration?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. New business item number four. Councilmember Perez, will you please?
Councilmember Perez, will you please present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number one five five one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second on the floor, staff report?
Nothing really that, sir. This is that area in the southeast part of the city, off of Dixie Farm Road, and also for the reasons given in the material, recommend your positive consideration.
Thank you. Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
So we have a number of persons that are wishing to speak. Same, same rules, three minutes. I'll let you know when there's one minute left. All forms would do at six-thirty. This is, this is different from the public forum. In the public forum, you could continue to turn them in, but in this meeting, our official meeting, cannot. So we'll start with Mr. Jeff Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Reed, thank you, council. Just first of all, I'd like to point out that I've donated to some of y'all's campaigns. You know, I don't even live in the city limits of Pearland, and I've been proud to live at one six nine three zero County Road, one twenty-seven Pearland, Texas. You have spoken in the past, or council has spoken in the past, that you have citizen support for these annexations. I've heard none here tonight. I would ask that you wait six months for the May election, when Derek Reed and Ordno's position is up, and give the council and staff time to develop a plan, which you don't have a plan for this annexation of this area, other than you want it because of a budget shortfall. It was a threat made at the last council meeting. Council is elected to serve and protect all citizens. When did it become a practice and ethical by council to threaten and withhold services that affect health, safety, and well-being of its citizens? I'm assuming that when and if this threat is carried out by council, the people of Silverlake and the ETJ be included in not receiving these services for their health, safety, and well-being, like the threat was made to the places that you're annexing tonight. And give us the date and time when these services will be terminated, and have, and let us make sure that you notify us of this. Prior to your vote tonight, and your vote on the second reading, you as council need to make sure you have not violated any Open Meetings Act by the state of Texas laws, policy, procedures on this annexation. This annexation is not going to fix your budget shortfall, only better planning, management, and you, you as council are the only ones who can resolve these issues, not the annexation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. Moving on to the next speaker, Mr. Bill Tristan?
Trey?
Trey, Treyan? And please remember to give your name and address.
Sure will. Bill Treyhan, four nine zero seven Sillsby. Thank you, gentlemen, for hearing us tonight. I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Pearland, a landowner in Area L. Very sorry, fellas, I can only see this as a land grab or a targeted annexation. If you look at your map, specifically targeted, small areas within some areas, so it's a targeted annexation. And while Mr. Perez says that, you know, it's not a land grab because we're not taking your property, what you are doing is you're going to take our property and tell us what we can build on it, how to build on it, and add considerable cost to developing our own property, whenever we purchase this property with all intentions of being outside the city limits of Pearland. I can't see this in any other way that you're subverting SB six, the will of the people, the vote. If y'all don't agree with the state legislature and the laws that they passed, then I suggest that you guys go back and y'all work with them, and y'all massage this, and get this new law in a position where it works for everybody, instead of trying to step out in front of it and subvert it and grab these targeted areas. I have to disagree with the theory on the services that we're all receiving out there in the ETJ and not paying for, because with that line of thinking, I guess every area in Texas that's unincorporated should be annexed into a city so that they should not receive any services, that they're not specifically taxed for? Just don't see that as a reasonable argument, you know, because when there's a fire, everybody shows up. When there's an emergency, everybody shows up. That's just the way we are, that's America. And guys, I just implore upon you guys to let the will of the people speak here, and back away and let everybody catch their breath. It was a bad time with the flood, everything that was going on, and this rush to get this thing done before it becomes a state law, where y'all can't do it. I personally don't like all the laws, but I have to follow them. Think you guys should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and thank you for continuing to respect the time limit. Mr. Mark Allen?
Mark Allen, one seven six two six Airfield Lane, Pearland, seven seven five eight one. I echo everything that Bill said, and I think this is, this is a way to get additional taxes for the city, for the shortcomings that the city has put themselves in, and I think this is a way to circumvent the state law, and I think you guys are wrong in doing that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Kevin Grobe?
Hello, I'm Kevin Grobe, I live at one six eight zero two County Road, one twenty-seven. I just wanted to voice my opinion that I disagree with the annexation. I didn't really get adequate notice to come to a previous meeting, so thank you for giving us very little notice. But I do ask that each one of you know that everyone that I've talked to in Area L does not want this to happen, and maybe I wasn't here before to voice my opinion, but I am another sole family that doesn't want this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grobe. And last, Ms. Michelle Fauzal?
Good evening. Michelle Fauzal, I actually live at seven zero seven Westfield, Friendswood, Texas, seven seven five four six. I believe the address I put was seventeen eleven County Road, one thirty, which is some real estate that I do own there.
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf of Area L, we too have retained legal counsel to examine the annexation of Area L, who has determined that the city is acting illegally and without authority to pursuing this annexation. Section forty-three point nine oh five of the Texas Local Government Code is extremely clear that annexation may not proceed unless the city provides notice to each public school district located in the annexation area. No such notice was given. Due to this, you have deprived Area L of a valuable ally in our fighting against the annexation due to the city's disregard for the law. The statute says the city may not proceed, and we fully expect that a judge will void any annexation ordinance that attempts to roll over the very clear and straightforward requirement. Additionally, the service plan provided to the property owners of Area L is deficient under the state law governing annexation. Section forty-three point oh five six B says that the city must provide full municipal services no later than two and a half years after the effective date of the annexation, or four and a half years with a scheduled, with a schedule to extend. The city's plan clearly states there is no plan to improve utility services, and the city will merely operate and maintain our existing level of service. This is not legal. The city is annexing land and is making no promises to treat the land like it is fully part of the city, which is required by law. I would like to go on the record, I officially request that the city immediately enter into negotiations with the property owners of Area L for the provision of services by the city under section forty-three point oh five six two of the Texas Local Government Code. This, yet another requirement of the state law governing annexation that the city has chosen to ignore to rush this annexation before December first. The law is clear, the city and the property owners shall negotiate. To date, the city has made no effort to negotiate. The annexation of Area L will be extremely costly to the city. This area has been looked at before by the city and was determined that it was too costly. So what has changed? Nothing has changed. It will still be very costly.
You have about a minute left.
On behalf of Area L, I would urge you to please vote no on annexing Area L. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fauzal. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. With respect to Area L, moving on, are there any comments from council?
I got one. I just want to give an notice on the police fire and MS. We have service agreements with Friendswood, Mambo, and Promodale sharing, and whether you're annexed or not, you'll still, you know, get those services through those service agreements. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Owens.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to request amendment to the, to the motion. I'd like to exclude some areas that I previously brought up from the annexation area, particularly the residential areas that are in, along County Road, one twenty-seven, in the north area. So those would be addresses seventeen, or sixteen seven thirty-two, sixteen eight oh two, sixteen nine oh four, sixteen nine thirty, County Road, one twenty-seven slash Hastings-Friendswood, and then seventeen zero zero two, seventeen zero zero four, seventeen zero zero six, and seventeen zero one eight, County Road, one twenty-seven. Again, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the motion that we remove those areas from the annexation area.
We have a motion and second on the floor to amend our previous motion. And if you don't mind, since there was a lot of addresses, when we get ready to actually vote on it, reread exactly what it is that you're amending. So, and Mr. Secretary, you've already gotten all that?
Yes, sir, I got partial of it.
Okay, can, can you, just so we're clear on the record?
Yes, sir. I'm requesting that we amend the motion to exclude one, I'm sorry, one six seven three two, one six eight zero two, one six nine zero four, and one six nine three zero, from County Road, one twenty-seven slash Hastings-Friendswood, and also one seven zero zero two, one seven zero zero four, one seven zero zero six, and one seven zero one eight from County Road, County Road, one twenty-seven. Again, requesting that we remove those addresses from the area to be annexed.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor for the amendment. Is there any council discussion with respect to the amendment?
I'd like to see a map, so we know what we're looking at.
We're working on that, and that'll be up in just a moment.
Sir, for those wishing to speak, it's not back and forth, and so, so council won't be answering any questions. Are there any more comments from council?
Mayor, we have that map up.
Yeah, so it would be the areas in yellow along the ninety-degree bend of one twenty-seven, up on the north, north corner of the annexation area. I'm not sure what the green is inclusive of within that area, but that, generally that, that whole area. Again, this was, this was the area that I had requested during the first public hearing that we had, that we exclude, and I'm still requesting that exclusion for the same rationale I presented in the public hearing.
Any further comments or questions from council for staff?
I guess, can you refresh my memory on your rationale and why we're picking out a few of these lots and...
Yeah, council member, so these are all residential areas. Obviously, the priority here was the airport. You know, most of the, most of the residential area in this, in this region, we're not looking to annex. I think that since these, these homes will be directly across the street from other homes that are not being annexed, and it's not really a priority from my perspective to meet the goals of annexing the airport, to include these areas. I know our future land use, or our future master plan for water service has water going down the right-of-way, but frankly, there's, there are other paths we can take for the right-of-way that doesn't include, or for the water line that doesn't include that right-of-way, or that's a priority that can be, that can be dealt with, with the county in the future. I just don't, I don't see that area for the priorities that we're looking for, for the, for this annexation area, I don't, I don't feel it's a necessity to include these, I believe it's nine homes. That was my rationale.
So I have a question to that. So are you saying that exclude these nine homes, but then change up our water map to where the lines would run around or bypass these homes?
We don't have to change the master plan at this point. We can keep the master plan as, as it is. At some point, when we go to implement the master plan in this area, we can look at, do we want to reprioritize and have the ability to annex this area for, to incorporate that water line at the time, or potentially put it in the rear of the property and in a public easement, which would be, in my opinion, six of one, half a dozen of the other, as far as it's, as far as its location, and minimal, minimal additional cost. So I don't think we need to make any, any specific changes. We could even do an interlocal with the county at the point, at that time, to say, in this area, we'll do, we'll have a water line within your right-of-way, and have the right to maintain in your right-of-way if we want to. But I think that there's a number of options to the point where we get to installing the water line in this area, where we can not, not include these, these residential homes at this time, and look at it further down the way.
So yes, the question I would have is, is there any additional residential homes in Area L once we've excluded those?
Yes, there are some additional residential land use properties in that area. Some are mobile homes, some are vacant and unoccupied.
Most of those are within the airport, correct?
Correct.
So these are the only residential homes I see that are out of the airport area, and not particularly a priority for this, for what, at least as I see, what we're trying to annex, I don't see as a priority to get those, those non-residential homes.
Any more comments from council with regards to the amendment? Hearing none, we have a motion and second on the floor with, as to the amendment only. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
No.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed four to three.
Oh, now, I'm sorry, the main motion. Are there any comments from council with regards to the main motion? The amended motion, I'm sorry.
I just want to address one thing that was brought up just very quickly. So areas outside of the city limits that get fire and emergency service, they do pay taxes to an emergency service district. That's how they get, that's how they get that service. It's not given to them without some burden upon the tax holders. That's a property tax. So there, there's no exclusion from being able to pay for this, except for in the limited areas where there's fire service inside an ETJ, and there's not an ESD. So to your question, that's how, that's how those services are provided.
Any more comments? So hearing none, we're voting on the amended motion with the exclusion of those properties that Councilmember Perez named in his amendment.
That's correct.
So, Mr. Secretary, we have a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed four to three.
Moving on to new business item number...
Five, five-two.
Five-two, correct. Moving on to new business item, item number six, Councilmember Carbone, will you please present this for our consideration? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, new business item number five. I'm, I'm just, I'm just starting off, so. Moving on to new business item number five consideration, I'm sorry. Councilmember Owens, will you please present this for our consideration?
You sure? Consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number one five five two F M U.
Second act.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Any staff report?
Nothing yet, sir.
We also have some members of the audience that would like to speak. Mr. Bill Brummett? Mr. Brummett?
Good evening. Bill Brummett, three four four one, County Road eighty-nine in Area P. Couple of statements for the annexation in Area P. Want to remind you again that I went from, I'm, I'm the long-term. Area P is the long-term from nine fifteen of, nine twenty-one of fifteen, so we were long-term. Went from a ten-plus-year annexation schedule to a six-day plan, a six-day plan. Mr. Trent, I know some addresses in Area P I'd like you to exempt. That'd be okay. Initially, in Area P, we had sixty-two homesteads or sixty-two listings under the general descriptions, and now, under the general descriptions of the pros and cons, we have eighty-seven households. I don't know where the other twenty-five come from, and I hope that could be addressed. And I'd also like to know, is one correct, is the other correct, or neither correct? And are we still overlooking the ninety-three trailers that are on our property? I'd ask if anyone from council has driven all of Area P to look at the road conditions that you'll be responsible to maintain, and have you considered the street lights that are needed, and factor those costs in to determine whether Area P is financially worth annexing? And I ask if there's been any discussion, I've emailed all of you guys at least once. I've talked to several of you on the phone, and I've talked with Joel several times on the phone, but have any of you discussed the service agreement in lieu of annexation that I've mentioned to you? It was part of your strategy in the nine fifteen, nine twenty-one fifteen program that you put out. And can you extend the ESD to Area P? Why do you have to annexes? Because we're talking about fire department, and what I'm hearing is there's a lot of ambulance and fire that go out, not necessarily a lot of structural fires that you're putting out, but there's a lot of ambulances that go out. When I went through the two hundred and whatever pages of your budget, to me, I thought the ambulance brought in two-point-five million bucks. Are you charging people when they go out, when you get an ambulance call, are people getting charged? Are we getting charged when they come to Area P already, and is that a wash? If we have the fire department on an as-use basis, as you're proposing, we're going to deal with the water. There are several areas in Area P, several roads in Area P that are private roads. They're owned by the landowners. Half is owned by this guy, half is owned by that guy, and they maintain the road. Are you annexing the road as well? Because they're not in the best shape. Mead, Dana Lynn, need to be resurfaced. I don't know if you've looked at those or not.
You got about thirty seconds.
We're moving fast. I got to go with Area P, and I got to talk about what Joel said in the latest write-up. He stated that, look, only five percent from this area came out to the public hearing and complained, so they don't care. And in my area, fifteen percent came out. You overlooked thirteen that I was speaking for last time. But I would say to you that if you're looking at fifteen percent, it's not a high number of people that come out. I doubt any of y'all were elected with over fifteen percent of the voting population of Pearland coming in. So, we've had high percentages show up. I'm out of time again. There's more to say. I beg you, vote no on Area P.
Thank you, Mr. Brummett. Taylor Mye?
I'm fine with that.
You know, I've had to look at tax percentages. It's more information that was sent out to us in the latest assessment, or the latest stuff that Joel sent out, and I'm seeing sixty-five percent debt payment for the taxes. It seems to me that you're drawing a send to help pay down that debt. Sixty-five percent debt is a huge amount of debt in my mind. I've been explaining, Joel said, no, that's normal, we're a little high, and you know, but run any household on sixty-five percent debt. We're, and that's just debt service. I don't even know if we're paying principal or if we're servicing the debt. It's almost like America, we're so far over there. The fire and ambulance I talked about, the last election I talked about, I didn't have that much. I could get more. I cut it short tonight. Oh, I did want to ask if anybody's put in for the two miles of ditches you're going to be responsible for on twelve-one. We got bar ditches out there, the county mows. Is it part of the budget? Has a plan really come out on this? It seems, you know, you say it's not a land grab, but we just went from residents and the airport to just the airport. That seems like a land grab of the airport. Over where I'm at, I understand you need control of the thoroughfare. Joel and I have talked about that. I don't know if you can ask the county, hey, can we have County Road eighty-nine? Can you have the road and leave the land alone? And I agree with the other guy that said, you're not taking our land, but you're going to be telling us what to do on our land and how we have to do it. Again, I ask you guys to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brummett. Any comments from council? Well, so, all forms, with all due respect, all forms were due in by six-thirty. I made an announcement at about six-twenty-five. If you don't have your form in now, it's not a public hearing like it was before, and so we just have to continue to move on. But we definitely appreciate the fact that you came, and your presence is known. Mr. Secretary, there's a motion and second on the floor.
Councilmember Owens?
No.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
No.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion fail three to four.
Moving on to agenda, new business agenda item number six, Councilmember Carbone, will you please present this for our consideration?
Yes, sir. Consideration possible action, resolution R twenty seventeen dash two twenty-six, so moved.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Carbone, go ahead and finish.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and second on the floor. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. As part of our budget process, we endeavor, we've got a series of capital improvement projects that the council will be seeing over the course of fiscal year. This is our practice and very normal at this time of the year at the beginning. We ask that this reimbursement ordinance be, resolution be passed, and this allows that as we make expenditures for design or even the construction award, that we will later reimburse ourselves with the actual sale of bonds financing and certificates of occupancy and the water and sewer bonds. That way, we can tie the amount that we issue closest to the actual amount needed, rather than doing it ahead of time and, you know, having an estimates in there, and, you know, that may change slightly. So, this is just part of our early budget and setting this up so we can reimburse ourselves from the future proceeds of, of debt service, of debt sales.
Thank you. Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council?
Yeah. I guess, maybe some explanation on this. You're doing the general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation, then the water and sewer revenue bonds, that's out of the enterprise system. Is anything going to be coming out of the enterprise system to pay back anything on the GOs and COs? Or is that, any of that going to be used on the enterprise system?
The general obligations are paid back strictly by the property tax levy. The general obligation, I'm sorry, the certificates of obligation are also paid back as debt from the property tax levy for debt, and then the water and sewer bonds are paid back strictly by the user fees from that enterprise fund. There may be some, you know, other reimbursements, things like that, to go back to pay some of the projects, but the debt is paid back by those sources that I mentioned.
Do we have good numbers on the bonds that we're going to sell for, or actually on the projects for twenty eighteen?
They're definitely the best we have at this moment, but again, the, the nice thing is that the numbers that are there, that's our estimate that we will sell for, but then, once, towards the end of the year, whenever the timing's right, we'll actually sell the bonds, and those will be tied closest to the amount that's needed based upon the construction bids that we get back.
Okay, so what I'm seeing on, actually going out to twenty-one, about a hundred and sixty million dollars?
For the water sewer side?
No.
In total?
In total.
Yeah, and most of that would be, as we know, water and sewer with the plant constructions and expansions of those. On the general obligation side, we go through a credit rating. We always get one of the top credit ratings back. Our ratios in terms of ability to pay, we've got, you know, not net, but I think nine billion dollars in valuation, so our ability to pay that back is very strong. And then on the water and sewer, likewise, we do, all those debt services are estimated into the rate structures that you see, the multi-years, so those are planned and anticipated. And again, on the user side, we've got strong growth in the user base and draws on the system, so we have a very, very strong ability to pay those as well.
On the general obligation and certificates of obligation, have we done, well, actually on the water and sewer, have we done PERs on any of those projects?
Years ago, we probably did some PER. These are probably farther along in terms of doing some of the design work. I mean, you'd have to, you know, like the, we've awarded the plant for the initial work for the water and sewer plants, for the test plants, and so those are very far along. And we've given numbers to the Texas Water Development Board, so, you know, they, at this stage, they've, you know, they've got, they're, they're pretty well-defined.
Okay. You know, I've always questioned the dollar amount spent, the dollar amount going in debt, and how much we're paying back, and we've got a large number now that we're paying back into it. And I kind of just hate to project out on four years of what we need and approve that at this time. That's way out in the future.
John can explain. This is really just one year that you're...
Councilmember Owens, if you'll look, I think it's the third page into this particular item on the left-hand side. It shows the actual expenses for twenty eighteen that we anticipate. And this is only, all we're doing is, is basically stating, this is what we intend to do this next, this upcoming year. And those are the amounts on the left-hand side. You're not approving anything above and beyond, and we actually have amounts, what we intend to go out for bond sales over this next year, and it's only for twenty eighteen. So, you're not locked into those future years, just the, and you're really not locked into the expenditures, because what will happen, as Clay just indicated, Mr. Pearson just indicated, we'll advertise those projects, we'll bid those out, and those projects will actually come back to you for approval. But we're only really talking about twenty eighteen. The rest of that is just to show you the bond effects over the previous year, or the supplemental years.
Okay, so twenty eighteen, we're looking roughly about sixty-one million in the three areas.
That's correct.
But we don't know if those are good dollar amounts or not that we're looking at for each one of these.
Yeah, we've done PERs on almost everything that's listed there. We've actually, some of these projects, and, and, Robert, you can state which ones. We've got some real hard numbers on those, so we feel comfortable in the numbers that we have for twenty eighteen.
Yeah, the dollar amounts are strong. I mean, for where we're at right now, and mentioned, you know, we're deep into some of these projects, the plant, design work, et cetera. So, it just depends on which one, and that's the whole purpose of this, is we're not actually issuing the debt until later, after we've got some, you know, even more information with actual construction awards. So, it's kind of the best of all worlds where this is a reimbursement for that future, and we'll issue the amounts dependent upon what's necessary to get these projects done. And the exhibits are just for the one year. The other exhibit that you mentioned is information just to try to give you a flavor for the longer term of what's planned and anticipated.
Okay, so actually, in twenty eighteen, then, we could look at the dollar amounts in twenty eighteen as a not-to-accise.
Well, again, this is reimbursed, and we're not going to, I'm trying to think the effect of that. I mean, it, we'll come back to you in the spring, probably. Is that when the timing would be for a bond issue? And most of these will be done, and you'll see each of these projects come through as you award them. Station aid is designed, by the very nature of that, that's going to give us estimates for future construction, but that's what that is. One, we've already tried to bid that once, but we're going out and we're going to be bidding that again. Sevens for future design as well, so just depends on the project.
Are any of these dollar amounts coming out of the two oh seven bond issue?
No, these will be future bond issues, this financing. I mean, some of these projects may be tied up with that, but...
It just bothers me sometimes on this, on the GOs and the certificates of obligation, the COs. You know, we're talking about large amounts of money through there, and, which that's just approved by council, nobody else, so. Okay, you answered my questions.
Any other comments from council?
I have one. Looking at these projected additional debt obligations, I think we currently, about, what, sixty-five percent of our revenues go to service debt. Is that correct? By twenty twenty-one, what, what are we projecting that number to be?
Well, looking it up, it's sixty-five percent of our total property tax, so we, it's, it's not our total operation. Sales tax is our largest general fund revenue, so if you, just the property tax levy, you know, we're more leveraged, just the point of we are on our growth curve. As far as the estimates for future debt, I mean, John, do you have that handy, or do you know?
If you don't have it, you can get back to me on that.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I think we can probably pull that up here in a few minutes, but every year when we come before you with our budget, we talk about long-term what our anticipated debt is, and what we anticipate is going to be the next year. And, you know, we're right around sixty-five percent on debt service right now.
Any other counsel? So, looking at the projected budget as it stands right now with the adopted FY eighteen budget, we're projecting to stay flat on the debt into nineteen and then go up two cents in twenty, to point four five, where it's point four three currently. And then on the operating side, we're looking at going up slightly in nineteen and slightly at twenty. So, in nineteen, we, if you're talking about a percentage of the total, gain a little bit on the operation side, and then in twenty, the two cents would come back up, and it would kind of go the other way a little bit. We don't, we don't go all the way out to twenty twenty-one, but we can, you know, do that, probably as part of next year's budget cycle.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we have a motion and second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Owens?
All right, bud, I'll be watching.
Motion passed six to zero with Councilmember Carbone absent from the chambers.
So I'm going to actually go out of order in the interest of time and also in the interest of those that are still here that are waiting to speak on certain agenda items and not knowing exactly how long it's going to take us to get through the other seven that we have. I'm going to jump down to agenda item number seven, mayor council issues for future council, city council agendas. And it's council input and discussion with respect to school zone flashers. I added this, just to note, I added this as a council member before that I knew, knowing that I was going to take this spot for a little while. At any rate, so I guess, is there, is there anything from staff before, I guess, I get into why I added it?
No, I don't think, just set up from background, we did attach some of the information we provided in the past. And we had one other discussion about this right before the school year started. We do meet each summer with the school officials and talk about their routes and many new facilities and what worked and what didn't work. You know, we obviously always open and working to talk to them and amending as necessary. We are guided by, you know, state laws and traffic safety practices and so forth. So there is a basis for these, and at the same time, we know that, you know, these are dynamic to some extent by the patterns of walking and, you know, that's, safeties are our primary concern. So the item says specifically the zone flashers. And our practice has been to put those on routes that are over 40 miles an hour. And very well open and have mentioned to the school officials that if they wanted additional beyond that, if they wanted to pay for the installation, we'd maintain them after that. So really, you know, look forward to any direction or suggestions that y'all may have.
Thank you. Does that complete, I guess, the staff report?
Yes.
So we have a few members of the audience that are wishing to speak on this topic, specifically Ms. Tammy Gromen.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Tammy Gromen, and I live at 13802 Lakewater Drive in Pearland, Texas. First, I want to wish Mayor Reed a continued speedy recovery. And in his absence, extend my support to Derek Reed as he assumes this very important role. Okay, I'm going to read just straight from my notes. I'm here today to discuss recent events in Shadow Creek Ranch where I live. For some time, it has been a common complaint that we have drivers traveling at high speeds throughout our streets, that vehicles are failing to stop for school buses loading and unloading children. And there have been numerous online reports of near misses with pedestrians, bicyclists, and other vehicles. Recently, in the past few weeks, the situation has escalated with two children being hit by cars while riding their bikes after school and a school crossing guard being hit. We need to prevent another resident from becoming, from being struck by a car, especially our smallest residents. I'd like to ask for your assistance in helping us find sustainable solutions for this issue. One way for drivers to be more conscious of speed limits and stop signs is to issue more and stronger penalties for violating these rules, particularly in our school zones during school hours. To issue more tickets would be, would we need more patrol units at least during these peak hours of traffic? Factoring in our neighborhood size, how does our school, how does our neighborhood compare with other neighborhoods with regards to the number of patrol units to residents? To break that down further, how many patrol units are out monitoring the traffic around schools during school hours as compared to other neighborhoods with schools? Regarding school zones, how does our neighborhood's posted school hours compare to those of other neighborhoods? Are our hours shorter? How does our neighborhood compare with other neighborhoods with regards to the number of pedestrians or bicyclist accidents? Based on the answers to these questions, the addition of more patrol units and flashers may be warranted. We have had dialogue in our neighborhood regarding the possibility of speed bumps or tables and rumble strips, at least around the school areas, as well as bright road strips. Would the city be willing to discuss pros and cons of these and other traffic calming options with our homeowners association? I also think we need to educate the children on walking and bicycling safety within our neighborhood. Would the city be willing to partner with Alvin ISD and its police department in offering this education? These are just a few of the options my neighbors and I have come up with. I know there are more and factors that we perhaps have not considered, which is why I'm here tonight asking for your expertise, your leadership, and your support in finding an effective solution to this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Agnes Truman?
Hello, I'm Agnes Truman, and I reside at 13005 Balsam Breeze Lane, Pearland, Texas 77584. I am also going to comment on the speeding situation in Shadow Creek Ranch. I have three children to our school age, and one is a three-year-old daughter. I myself have been hit by a pedestrian, I mean, by a car as I was in a crosswalk. It was at a, it was in a stop sign, and my calf was grazed. I pushed my daughter ahead, otherwise it would have been my daughter in the stroller. I walk my children every day, and every day as I'm crossing Kingsley, I am, we are about to enter the crosswalk, and we see numerous cars speeding by us without regard to the fact that we are already stepping into the crosswalk. I have pulled my children out of the crosswalk to avoid being hit by cars. It is, I have, I have not seen driving like I have around Shadow Creek Ranch, and something needs to be done. The other issue besides crosswalks are stop signs, stop signs are treated as yields in our neighborhood. I run around Shadow Creek Ranch, so the things that I have seen are just incredible with the drivers. As the previous speaker mentioned, I believe either the speed bumps or rumble strips are a good idea. Even the signs, I think part of it is just education. I think some of it is that people may not realize that pedestrians have the right of way when they're entering a crosswalk. And also perhaps flashing lights, lengthening the length of school zones. But something needs to be done. As mentioned already, two children have been hit and a crossing guard. So I appreciate any help in Shadow Creek Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. So I'll start as far as comments from council are concerned, since I had it added to the agenda. This was an agenda item or it's something similar that was on in September for council input and discussion. When I brought it up then, you know, I mentioned, hey, you know, we need to address the speed limits across the city, lowering them around school zones specifically, the general speed limits, so that the school zones would also be lowered. We, as a council, have the power to do that regardless of what engineering tells us, regardless of what study. You know, doing my own little research, we're not even in compliance with TechStop when it comes to our speed limits around school zones. And that's something that, you know, no shot at staff, but, you know, from an engineering perspective, it's not being shared with us. As far as specifically with the speeding and that kind of thing within Shadow Creek Ranch specifically, Shadow Creek Ranch, we have to remember, is the largest HOA governed community in the country. And so that's, it's an anomaly, or not anomaly, but it's very different for Pearland, but for anybody, any city. You know, you have, what, I guess, 40,000 people that live on that side of the freeway alone and about 30,000 or 20-something thousand that live inside of that one area. And so what we're seeing now is three people that have already been hit after that agenda item. You know, somebody has died by being hit, and that was a runner, not necessarily in a school zone. But I'm not really sure why we as a body can't at least look at this closer and take into consideration the possibilities of either one, putting flashers on the non-major thoroughfares. I know we've said something, and Mr. Pearson mentioned, you know, talking to the school district and having them pay for, you know, the actual lights, and then we keep them maintained. You know, I think that hearing this and talking to Pearland ISD as well, they would want something similar. But if we can help them out maybe with, you know, maybe splitting the cost of the actual flashers and then maintaining them or something, something of that nature. But a major thoroughfare that we traditionally know of, or that we've traditionally called a major thoroughfare in our old UDC is not a major thoroughfare, or is not what we, what would be considered a major thoroughfare in Shadow Creek Ranch specifically. I mean, you have Kirby and you have Kingsley, which are heavily traveled streets. If we're going to really call something a major thoroughfare, I think we need to look at how much that street is traveled as opposed to just the speed limit on it. The speed limit right now is 30 miles an hour on Kingsley. No one goes 30 miles an hour. The speed limit on Kirby is 30 miles an hour. No one goes 30 miles an hour on that street. And so I know there's, you know, a lot of us up here that don't have kids, but there's few of us up here, including myself and a couple of other council members, that do have young kids. And those kids will be affected, not just in Shadow Creek Ranch, but on Pearland Parkway eventually, on Cullen eventually, and, and... No, he's on Cullen. He knows who I'm talking to. On Cullen eventually. And so I just think we need to take a overall look at our speed limits around school zones. There's not one citizen here that's saying, "Don't lower the speed limits." Not one, except for Councilmember Ordno, that's saying, "Do not lower the speed limits." And so if there were a whole bunch of citizens that came in, just like they did for Area P and all of those, which was obviously voted down, we'd be listening to them. So we have a few citizens here tonight. We also have, you know, a few members from, the superintendent from Alvin ISD, which that district falls into his realm, and the assistant superintendent. Obviously not, not here to speak, but definitely here of interest. And so I think that speaks volumes, and we, as a council, should heavily consider either changing up the UDC to address our flashers, but also address the speed limits. And I know this is not the actual agenda item, but the speed limits surrounding our school zones. That's essentially all I have to say.
If I could chime in real quick. So over on McLean Road by Centennial, or after Centennial Park by the water park, there's a crosswalk right there. That crosswalk, you can push the button to get across the street, and it has reflectors on the road that flash. When I'm driving through a school zone, I always, I hate it when there's not a light because I don't know when I'm supposed to slow down. So I had to try to read the sign that's in really small print, and my eyes are not as good as they used to be, trying to figure out, do I need to slow down because I'm in this time of that time? I, that takes my eyes and my focus off the road, and if a kid run out in front of me, I'd probably run him over because I'm too worried about trying to read that sign to know if I'm supposed to slow down. So do I just slow down at every school zone? That's what I have to do because I don't know. But if I get close to a school, I slow down. Not everybody does that. If we can do something to draw attention that you're entering into a school zone, you need to slow down instead of relying upon people to read the sign that says, "This time to this time, this is the speed limit."
One other thing, thank you for the comment. One other thing that I wanted to ask, I guess, staff is, do we have the ability to request like a, I think it's called a safe route to school grant?
That's CDVG money.
Okay. Well, I mean, can we request that to have that help to pay for flashers?
I think, and Joel, let me jump in. I've requested that on other areas. The problem is, is that that is for low-income areas, and it's very limited where that can be used. And I was going to talk to this. There are specific areas in this, in this region where I would have hoped to be able to use that money, but we don't qualify as far as CDVG funding. So unfortunately, unless something has changed in the last five years or so, I don't think that there, that's available funding for these areas, correct?
Well, actually, this is TechStop money that comes through the federal highway funds that go through the state that we apply for on a regular basis. We did put an application to the state several years ago with a state safe route to school plan that was, you know, addressed most of the priorities throughout the city. And I believe we did have a couple of projects that allowed us to develop some crosswalks, but TechStop just has not called those projects up yet. The funding is available, but it's also part of an alternative use program that the MAP-21 funds that come through the state, the state can decide to spend that money elsewhere. And my understanding is that they may have done so. So safe routes to school is probably not as viable an option as it used to be, but I don't know what the future holds as far as that's concerned. But that is a program that's been in place for years, and we did submit a proposal that included several projects, some of which were crosswalk related.
Thank you, Joel. Let me address a couple of things. So I had actually already been in conversations with a few of the trustees and Alvin ISD about, about a few of their areas of concern before there were even accidents. And we had, I had personally discussed with them in the due course, which was over the summer, we look at making some amendments to these, to these areas. I think particularly with Nolan Ryan and the elementary school that's right next there, Merrick, there is, there's some need to amalgamate those school zones so it serves both schools. We've got junior high kids that are locking down Kirby, and they're not protected because the school zone in front of Merrick actually expires prematurely. I don't know why that was done. Sorry about that. Probably. But they were done, those school zones in front of Merrick expire prematurely to Nolan Ryan Junior High. So I think that there's absolutely some merit to amalgamate those, get those times to coordinate better. I think I'm happy, you know, we moved up and shortened the school zone over by Merrick to get north of Enclave Lake and intersection with Kirby. I think certainly moving that down and giving the crosswalk there a little bit better protection. I think that's a simple thing, and, you know, I'm perfectly happy entertaining the idea of prioritizing that to do that now as opposed to waiting till the summer when we go through. And then during the summer, maybe you get a more aggressive look at some of the other school zones in this area. Maybe a little bit, a little bit sooner than we normally do. That way we have more time to discuss it. And maybe as council, reach out to some of the school board members and the superintendents. I do want to be careful about over-advertising school zones to be protection that they're not. You know, the general rule is you want to put the school zones about 200 or 300 feet in front of or advance of either driveway or property line, 45 minutes before the bell, 15 minutes after in the morning, and then the inverse in the afternoon, 15 minutes before and 45 minutes after. There are numerous studies that show arbitrarily lengthening the school zones either by distance or by duration has a inverse proportionality to safety. So we have to be careful about reacting to, there was an accident in and around an area where there is a school zone in and around the time there was a school zone, lets them in the school zones because what we can do is end up causing more problems than we solve. I can tell you that the accident that happened at Emerald Bay and Kirby, the school zone was not a factor. The guy ran over a stop sign. That's independent of school zone. That doesn't mean that we can't and shouldn't constantly amend these things to make sure that we're dealing with the issues that we have and work with the ISDs to make sure that we're better coordinated with them and we're reaching out and trying to do whatever education we can to ensure that we're getting the best out of our return. I'm perfectly happy paying for the flashers. I'm perfectly happy in reducing the criterion for flashers instead of at 40 miles an hour and higher to be 35 miles an hour and higher. We may not be able to swallow that all in one school year, but maybe we look at a program where we say, you know, from east to west or west to east, we start looking at all the school zones at 35 miles an hour and higher and add them programmatically over a two-year period or three-year period. If we can swallow it all in one year, that's fine. I think some of the, some of the issues, particularly on this side, are not driven by the school zones. They're driven by we're mixing pedestrians with car riders too often. When that development agreement was put in place, the developer negotiated sidewalks only on one side of, I believe, secondary thoroughfares and... only on one side of, I believe, secondary thoroughfares and higher. And so, they did their due diligence. They put sidewalks on Business Center on the, on the west side. They put sidewalks on the west side of Kirby. I think at this point now with, with as much infill as we have and as much pedestrians that we have in that area, the, the city, and I've been speaking about this for years, we're, I think we've got an obligation to try and build the sidewalks on the other side. The kids in the apartment complex over in Business Center walk in the street to get to Nolan Ryan. It doesn't matter if we have school zones in there or not. Doesn't matter if the traffic's depleting by 15 miles an hour, we're still getting kids walking near cars. We need to move them out of the street. Same thing on Kirby. Get the kids from not having, stop the kids from having to, to, to pass traffic as often and give them a safer passage where they're not, they're not interacting with cars as often. So, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be some aggressive moves on the city, and I know we've had some discussions with the school board on this, or, I'm sorry, with, with the superintendent and his staff, and I've had some discussions with some of the trustees about doing both of these things. Now, do we want to do this now? That's really up to us. I'm happy to do it now. If we want to wait till the summer when we do this in the normal course, I'm personally not that patient, particularly with as many people who is, are concerned, but we can do it then. But either way, I think we, we need to do it. So, I think for these areas, let's get sidewalks on the, on the east side of both of those roads. Let's take a look at sidewalks in and around the school zones, particularly in this area where the sidewalks are not obligate, were not obligated in the development agreement to be built on both sides, and look at where we need to fill those in to keep kids from interacting. To the mid-block crossing, I, I was fervently against us putting that mid-block caution in McLean. Mid-block crossings are inherently unsafe. I don't think that we ever should do a mid-block crossing unless it's absolutely necessary, and I would define absolutely necessary as being almost never. There are a lot of accidents when we do mid-block crossings. It gives the people who are crossing that street a false sense of safety. I can tell you, I drive McLean quite often, that's right in front of my, or right by my office, nobody pays attention to that crossing. Nobody. And if we start doing them in these school zones, nobody's going to pay attention to them. And we're going to, we're going to increase the amount of accidents rather than decrease it. So, I'm happy to work with staff. I'm happy to work with the, the school district and find a good solution, but find a solution that's based in, based in what will be effective. That's all I have to say, Mayor Proctor.
Simple fact is, we need to do something, we need to do it soon. It, it's, it's not going to be good when we're sitting up here talking about a, a child that's, you know, gotten run over and it's a fatality issue. We need to address this and address it soon.
Okay. Well, I would, I'm perfectly happy entertaining that we reach out and put on the agenda that we modify the school zones in the vicinity of Merrick and Nolan Ryan Junior High to amend them, to lengthen it, get it south of either Enclave, or south of Emerald Bay, Enclave Lake, or Enclave Lake at Kirby, and then revise the, the timings so that Merrick and Nolan Ryan Junior High have the exact same time.
Let me, let me stop you real quick, and I, I like that proposal. Clay, is there, is there something that we need to, I mean, to do from here to get this ball rolling?
Well, the ball's been rerolled, I guess, since the start of school, and we've had at least one, we shared, reported out on that, one if not two formal meetings with Alvin ISD, since that's where, you know, most of the questions and topics come up, and probably naturally, as they've opened up a couple real nice new schools, it probably is good to do a mid-year check here. And if you wanted to, you know, we could meet with them again and come back to you in, you know, four weeks before the end of the calendar year, and give you some recommendations, some ideas, and see where you wanted to go. I mean, some physical, we can report on the enforcement. I mean, our enforcement is, you know, I, I know for a fact, and, and I think council appreciates this, that PDs, whenever there's any free time, patrol time, they're, they are assigned and dedicated out to the school zone. So, there's significant physical presence. There's a lot of schools in town. I mean, it's a young town, so, but we can talk about that too if you want to in that four-week report.
Well, I, I think so, a couple of things, and Councilmember Moore and Councilmember Perez mentioned, flashers obviously, you know, let people know. I, I don't know that having more police in, in Shadow Creek Ranch is going to stop people from speeding. I think it's more letting people know that there are school zones, and you're approaching that school zone. When something's flashing in your face, then you know that, that it's, that it's happening. And so, if the conversation with the ISD can be more of a negotiation as to, and, and, you know, maybe it gets voted for or against by council, but, you know, I'm with Councilmember Perez, surprisingly, when, when he said, no, I'm messing with you. I'm, I'm with Councilmember Perez when he said, you know, that the, the flashers, you know, something that either we pay for, or I'm fine with, you know, maybe splitting the cost, or some type of negotiation when it comes to that. Also, Councilmember Perez mentioned 45 minutes before and 45 minutes after.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, well, 45 minutes before school starts, 15 minutes after school starts, 15 minutes before school ends, and 45 minutes after. And that's not the case on our, on our school zones with respect, at least, at least over there, from what I'm seeing. I, I want to say that it ends, that the school zones start, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe 30 minutes before?
Thirty.
And, and not 45 minutes before. When I said that we didn't comply with Text Dot, that's exactly what I was talking about. You know, I, I, I think we're doing more to, to service people that are not here, and that we assume want these shortened school zone times, or shortened school zones, or don't want flashers than we are doing for the folks that are actually here and are speaking out on this issue. Again, I, I had this on, on our agenda in September before these people got hit. Councilmember Perez stated that he spoke with Alvin ISD before these people got hit. And as Councilmember Moore said, the next thing is going to be somebody getting killed, and we're still hitting, still sitting here having the same conversation. And so, if, if the conversation with Alvin ISD needs to be, or specifically, if you can go with us negotiating the cost of flashers, well, I guess the first thing would be, are we as a council willing to change the UDC to stay, or I'm sorry, to change it to where it's not a major thoroughfare, but maybe, you know, 30 miles and over?
So, I think that's not a, a component of the UDC. That's a component of the EDCM. Actually, it could be a component of the EDCM. It's right now just a policy, you know?
But essentially, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I, I, I'm fervently for us looking at, and to be honest with you, I, I'm not 100% sure that dropping that, the criteria down to from 30, from 40 to 35 to where we trigger flashers, or go through our roadway classification where we say anything that's a secondary thoroughfare, or, or a major collector and higher, we do that. I'm, I'm not 100% sure which one would be more effective or effective at all, but I do want to entertain the conversation. I think we need to split this into two particular issues. One, we know that we have an existing problem, desire to modify what is near Merrick and Nolan Ryan Junior High. I think we can prioritize that, and I would hope to be able to get that, get that done and those signs in place prior to the second half of the school year starting. Coupled with that, have a discussion over time with, do we want to modify our general policy as to school zone timing with relation to the bell, and where we want to implement flashers? So, we deal with the immediate issue, one that we already have identified immediately, and then have a, a long-term discussion over, over how we want to modify this so that we are prepared by the summer when we enter into modifying the school zones to know exactly what we're modifying, and everybody's on the same page. The flashers, I think, if I remember, about $4,000 a pop if we're doing solvers?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand?
We're connecting them all anyway.
Ninety-three hundred?
They're 9300, just for the flashers. You're looking at a total cost of about $11,900 to install one set of, one flasher.
So, what we could look at is agree to a policy as to how we want to modify those. Look at the financial implications of that policy, step two, and then go into the final step. Is that something we can swallow ourselves over time? Is that something that if we tell the, the ISDs, hey, we can't do this all this year because, you know, we, we can't afford it, and they jump in and say, well, we can afford part of it, and then we can do it either all in one, over one summer, or we do it over two summers? I mean, I think it's a staged approach, but I am absolutely for looking at modifications of what we have, and, or at least entertaining the conversation.
As far as modifying the policy specifically, I mean, that policy was set up for Pearland probably 2004, 2005. I don't know when the last time it was modified.
Oh, that thing's a living document. I think it goes through a lot.
Twenty-fourteen, Councilman, twenty-fourteen was the issuance of that policy.
So, was it, was it taken into consideration that there's 30,000 people that live in one neighborhood?
It takes a look at the entire population as, as a whole. So, you're looking at all the school zones as a whole, not one specific location at once. You have to look globally on that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, like I said, we, we have the largest HOA-run neighborhood in the nation. And so, you know, specifically, what Councilmember Perez was mentioning with respect to the flashers being separated, or, or addressing Merrick and Nolan Ryan immediately, and then maybe coming back and looking at the budget for, for flashers, and then also extending some school zones. But not, not just, you know, in that area, but around the town, around the city of Pearland in general. I know the 45 minute before and the 45 minutes after, is there any reason why we chose to go to 30 minutes instead of 45 minutes?
Those are all looked at and discussed with each of the school districts themselves. And on the Text Dot side, as you quote, as you quote, is that it's 45 before and zero after, zero minutes after the bell. There's other policies. Our Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute uses 30 and five. So, we work with the districts to determine what is the best, best course, 30 minutes before, 15 after. So, we also seek their guidance. We don't just throw a dart and sit up there and just make that choice. It's sitting with each of the superintendents or the, or the Director of Safety and Transportation.
So, that was my next question. Are you, are you telling the districts what you recommend with your engineering studies? Because I, I honestly don't, I mean, I don't care about those when it comes to, like I said, a child being hit, or several children being hit, or a child, a child being killed. Are you asking the districts, what do you propose, and coming back to us with that? Because usually when, the past, what, three summers that I've been on council, it's been, you're coming back and telling us, this is what we're going to do. We've spoken to the district, but, and maybe not you specifically, but is it, is it that staff is telling the district what to do?
We provide recommendations, and we also provide it is that we can stay status quo. We're also taking a look too, is trying to uniform across the entire city.
So, it was a district's, it was a district's idea to shorten Merrick's school zone?
To shorten it? We provided the recommendations based off the guidance documents, and we asked, and we said, and we also worked with Alvin ISD and said, you know, as using the, as using the Text Dot guidance and also the TTI to say, to take them out. And so, then we recommended, and we brought forth a request, and if they did not want to buy into it or do that, we would have left it alone.
We shortened a school zone to after the crossing guards by 50 feet. To do what? I mean, and, and I, I apologize, it's, it's, it's ridiculous to me to shorten a school zone by 50 feet after the crossing guards, after the crossing guards, and then the crossing guard there gets hit. To do what? I mean, that's ridiculous. We, we, we achieved nothing. We didn't save any money. We didn't do, I mean, there was nothing that happened positive for the city for that. Only thing that happened was two people got hit at that crosswalk.
Well, I would just say, look.
No, 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 hold on one second. I'm not, I'm not, I, I don't need an explanation. I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of just giving my frustrations, but, but, but we, we didn't save anything, we didn't do anything, we only made matters worse. And so, like Councilmember Perez said, if we could have that addressed immediately, and then look to the other things later on, down the line, I mean, that'd be great. Sorry, go ahead.
I would say, look, I was in favor of shortening the school zones because every study shows that shortened school zones are safer. Again, that the accidents that happened were not a result of the school zone.
The accident that happened at Kirby and Emerald Bay was a result of the school zone?
The guy ran the, the stop sign. That was, that's independent of school zone. I don't want to advertise to people we're going to lengthen the school zone, and somehow that's more safe. As you, as you said before, people are speeding already. If we advertise that there is a lower speed limit by arbitrarily lowering it, it makes it more dangerous. So, the, I mean, there are real solutions to these issues, but arbitrarily making changes is not one of, I want to go through and make these changes, I just want to do it in a studied fashion.
We've done many studies.
Look, the studies are, the studies are meritorious. To say that we're going to do a study and clear, clear the city of all accidents, it's, that's an impossibility. It's a higher standard. People get hit in school zones often. People get hit outside of school zones often. People get hit in 30 mile an hour school, roadways. People get hit in 60 mile an hour roadways. We are never going to create a policy that is going to make everybody safe. The drivers ignore what we put out there. That is, that is the heart of what the issue is. I want to make this area Merrick and Nolan Ryan safer for the students by extending the school zone to the, to south of the intersection. I was in favor of moving it forward. I, you know, I'll admit my fault in my argument in that before. We'll move it south, and we'll amalgamate these to the, where the times are the same. And I think that will advertise more safety for the kids coming out of Nolan Ryan Junior High as they walk down Kirby and get to their homes south of that intersection. Coupled with that is giving them a safer place to walk. But I don't want to overreact and start arbitrarily making significant changes across the city and to our general policy with the expectation that we're going to somehow cure the fact that drivers don't pay attention to our signs. We can put flashers, we can put, we can put flaggers. I can tell you, I can tell you, construction zones where we have flaggers that have a stop sign in their hand standing in the street that says, "Stop," and they still get hit.
I, look, I, I understand that. I guess, are there any more comments from council?
Yeah, I mean, if it's going to be three of y'all, y'all can do this without us out here, because it's not a quorum.
Go ahead.
You know, one of the comments that I heard multiple times is, "Nobody drives a speed limit on these roads." Could that be because the speed limit's too low? I mean, i- is that a possibility? There is set speed limits, and then there's actual travel, how fast cars travel based off the design of the road. You put Kirby in almost any other area, and it's a 40 to 45 mile an hour speed limit. It's divided, it's two lanes on each side, it's limited access. I, I can easily see that at 40, 45. Then you get the blinking sign that everybody seems to want, and it, it moves forward. I, I don't have a problem with the blinking sign. Oh.
We just lost quorum. Councilmember Owens?
We just lost quorum.
If you leave the...
If you leave the room.
Legals, no. Sorry.
We need to have six councilmen in the room.
Or the mayor. Yeah, that's the problem, the mayor's not here. So, and, I mean, that, that's my only comment, is I don't mind looking at it across the board, but we need to do things across the board. You know, the, the policy's in place to allow for flashing signs there. It, it's just, how does that happen? Who pays for it? And again, as was stated by Councilmember Perez, there is no perfect solution here. I, I will say from the accidents I've seen, it's mostly, honestly, drivers not paying attention. The drivers I've seen when I was riding my bike, when I was running through the community, McLean's one of the roads and that little blinking crosswalk. I, I hit the button, the little flashers flashed in the street. I guarantee if a car was coming, I didn't cross it, because I knew they weren't stopping. We live in an area where we're not used to pedestrians on roads. We're used to cars on roads. The staff's done some, some work on education. I do believe it's an education issue. I believe a lot of our traffic's an education issue. To this day, I can still take Beltway down and hit Kirby and come in and watch the people that I passed that decided to take 288 and then come up Shadow Creek Parkway. So, it, it is education of the drivers, of drivers paying attention. The, the question is, what do we do to get them to pay attention? And what I've learned, my time up here, is the only way to get residents to pay attention is to do something to piss them off. Because short of that, the general public doesn't care to pay attention. They go on with their lives and, and they move forward. So, I'll, I'll stay there.
Remember, if we could come back, we're, we've got a meeting set up, another meeting set up with AISD. If we come back December 18th, you know, Thanksgiving, I think it's probably realistic, everything else we've got going on, to give you, you know, we heard about the flashers and the con, conuggetty of the zones, et cetera, at least give you a, a start of a plan that we can bring back to you.
Yeah.
Okay. My, my comment's not going to be redundant. I think the way you piss them off, as Councilmember Ordno said, is you give them a ticket when you're speeding through a school zone. And this is not anything bad about our... And this is not anything bad about our police force, I've got my little Blue Lives Matter bracelet, I don't always wear it. I think more allocation of police officers in school zones in the morning, if that can be done, to write more tickets is what will cause people to slow down in school zones.
Councilmember Carbone?
I would agree with that, I've fought that around my neighborhood, um, in terms of enforcement. And in terms of the flashers, I mean, Alvin ISD's here, a lot of the HOAs are here. If staff come back, comes back to us and says, we've got funding from the school district and HOAs to put flashers up, I, we can do it across the city tomorrow. I'm so, just so, I, I think most of the councils is okay with that. If we can figure the funding out, let's, let's get them in.
So, the staff have, I guess, good direction?
Yes, sir.
And we'll come back on the eighteenth?
Yep.
I'm gonna do a brief recess, um, I'm sure there's some folks that are ready to leave, uh, and we'll come back to new business item, new business item number seven. At eight twenty-three. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting back to order at eight thirty. And going back to, uh, back in our agenda to new business item six, um, we're gonna do, start with new business item number seven. Councilmember Moore, will you please, uh, present this for our consideration?
Thank you. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R two zero one seven dash two two seven, so moved.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. Um, as part of the city's TERS number two, Shadow Creek Ranch and, and surrounding environments, uh, there's two separate boards that, uh, deal with the development financing. Uh, there's the TERS board, and then there's the development author, development authority. Um, the development authority's the one that actually issues the bonds, and, uh, they did so after reviewing all the material. Uh, those bonds are sold, and John Roebuck is here, our financial advisor, to, uh, give rundown about the numbers for that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mayor Pro Tim Reed, councilmembers, John Roebuck, VOK Financial. Uh, we do have the results of the tax and commit contract revenue bonds, series twenty-seventeen, that we sold for the development authority of Pearland. I'm gonna skip the market, uh, I show this every time, but the market's in a good shape, and you'll see by the bids that we received. But on October thirtieth, we sent out a term sheet and a bid sheet to twenty-seven different banks across the state, across the United States, some local, some, uh, major Wall Street, and some international firms. We received five bids, uh, on Friday afternoon at one o'clock, uh, ranging from two point three percent all the way to two point eight-two percent. Uh, to give you an idea, Regions, Compass, and Bank of Texas has historically bought these bonds from the development authority of Pearland. So this time JP Morgan and Frost are new purchasers, new, new interest from different banks. And, uh, also let you know, Amagey Bank expressed interest, but, uh, they just couldn't get there fast enough, they had to get to the credit committee. So, we actually have six banks looking at the, uh, bonds, which is great for competitive, uh, rates, uh, for the authority. But the winning rate was from Regions Capital Advantage of two point three percent, uh, standard ten-year call, uh, callable September one, twenty twenty-seven, uh, twenty twenty-seven, excuse me. And again, no, uh, reserve fund requirement on the proposed bonds. Uh, sourcing uses of funds, we did sell eight million, five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in bonds, uh, expenses of a hundred eighty-eight thousand. So the total proceeds, which will be going to the developer for reimbursement for their initial costs, uh, will be eight million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand. The all-cost interest rate, which includes the issuance cost, is two point six seven three percent. With y'all's approval tonight, the authority did approve it early today at three o'clock with your approval, we will, uh, send the documents to Attorney General, and then turn around and close on December twelfth, at which time the authority will receive the funds to reimburse the developer. Uh, this is the final debt service requirements, based on the rate provided by Regions. Again, we sold eight hundred, eight million, five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in bonds, they're in the middle column. Interest, uh, they're a million, almost a million three, and then on the far right, total debt service requirements with the existing debt of the authority, um, about one hundred sixteen million dollars, almost one hundred seventeen million. Uh, each, each year, we receive estimated and certified values for the year, and based on those certified values, we compare to the base value, uh, established in nineteen ninety-eight, which establishes the captured value. That captured value we use to basically bond against. And so we use a capacity analysis based on those captured values of the three entities, being the city, Brazoria County, and Fort Bend County. As values increase, we have more bonding capacity. As a result, uh, this time here in the green, based on capacity, we could issue, again, the eight million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, which, there in the green, is the total debt service requirements for that bond issued. And then far right there, again, is the total debt service requirements on the prior page. And then the final page, um, this presentation, again, the last date, if, with y'all's approval, we will close, uh, on December twelfth and fund the authority with those funds at that time. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Uh, I will say, Tanya Fisher, with, uh, Anders Kurtz Bond Counsel for the Authority and for the cities here, she's the one who drafted the, the resolution we're asking you to approve. I'm sure she'll be happy to answer questions about the resolution. If you have questions about the numbers, I'll be happy to address those.
Does that complete staff report, presentation?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council?
Uh, would you go back to the, the chosen market? And, uh, these lines are what, twenty years and twenty-five years? What's the term of the debt we're issuing now?
Uh, it's eleven years.
Yeah, so are rates typically higher or lower the shorter term you go?
Uh, shorter. I mean, they're lower, I'm sorry, they're shorter during the lower, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's late night. Is, is there any index that we can put for future presentations? Because these, the, the term that we're gonna be issuing is getting shorter every year, so you're gonna look like a rock star every year, cause you're comparing to a twenty and twenty-five year.
Yeah, there's, I, I would agree a hundred percent. There, there, you know, this is general market, uh, data. I mean, we could try to find something, I mean, basically be comparing it to, there's really nothing.
Maybe like a five-year T-bill?
Because we're talking about non-rated, privately placed with the bank, we're not getting these rated at all, so.
Like a five-year T-bill?
Probably look more closer to, uh, well, uh, probably with a spread, yeah, cause you're almost talking about a.
It'd be interesting to see something so that it's not, we're not skewed so much. And would you go a few slides later to walk us through those fees?
Sure.
And, um, where, where are the big fees going?
Uh, big fees on this are obviously to the, uh, you see the top three lines, uh, co-bond counsel, and also the financial advisor.
Yeah, everybody's here tonight?
I know Edith Kurtz is here, is anybody from, um, Tom Buh Humphries here?
Thank you, I, even though it's a skewed comparison, I think you did get us a good rate. Not as good as you wanna make it look, but it's still good.
I think there's a market right there with the bids we are seeing.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Appreciate the effort.
We have a motion to second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
No.
Motion passed six to one.
Moving to new business item number eight. Moving to new business item number eight, Councilmember Ordino, will you please present this for our consideration?
Consideration and possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash two thirty-two, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on the floor, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we have an annual, um, software maintenance contract. We do, uh, have, uh, certain elements of the HTE, uh, legacy system, uh, in place we still rely upon, um, and that we need to, uh, have that, uh, up and running for us to, uh, keep up operations.
Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion to second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens? Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Motion, motion passed seven to zero.
Councilmember Little, will you please present, uh, for our consideration, new business item number nine?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, consideration of possible action, resolution number R twenty seventeen dash two three four, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on the floor, staff report.
And likewise, uh, we're moving into the Tyler, uh, platform ERP, and starting in with, uh, service contracts, uh, for that system.
Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council?
Quick comment, uh, is, is Tyler the one that's used by utility billing?
We use New World for municipal court.
And, and it's both, it's municipal court and the new ERP system, so yes, it's the new utility billing.
Can, can we get our water billing straight?
Yes, please.
I, it's, it's been going on for, I don't know how many months, and I get it might be different issues, but at the end of the day, folks are getting, getting billed different, different days, different amounts, missing bills, um, and I, I, I don't know how I'm gonna get comfortable on the financial audit side, just from the few bills that I've seen and how it's, it's coming through. So we've gotta get this straight, and i- it's not a new issue, it shouldn't be a surprise, but, um, what, approving a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar, uh, contract for, for tech support, see if they can come help us for that amount.
Yeah, I got double billed in October. I don't know if I'm paying the right amount or not, cause it's substantially more than what I paid, and I haven't missed a bill.
Talk to your councilman.
Yeah.
And talk to my councilman, Councilman Carbone fixed it.
It's absolutely frustrating, uh, and my mom's hitting me with it, and I've got a stack of her bills, and I can't explain it to her, and I'm CPA. But it's tough, and, uh, we need to get it fixed.
Any further comments from council?
I, I may have to resign, cause I haven't paid that second bill yet. So I'm indebted to the city.
We have a motion to second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Councilmember Perez, will you please present, uh, new business agenda item numbers ten for our consideration?
Sure, I assume, Mr. Koker, I need to read the whole thing?
Well, I was gonna, if council, the last few times we've done, uh, condemnation, uh, resolutions, I, I've read it into the record, if you would prefer to do that, I'll leave it up to council.
I think people are sick of hearing my voice.
What, I'm sorry?
I think people are sick of hearing my voice.
No.
That was an assumption.
I'll go ahead and read the, uh, I'll read the caption, uh, for two thousand seventeen dash two thirty into the record, and then I'll explain a little bit more about what's going on here. A resolution in the city council, the city of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the Hughes Ranch Road Improvement Project from Cullen Parkway to Smith Ranch Road, being a zero point zero zero one nine of one acre, a total of eighty-two square feet, parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey Abstract Number five oh six, Brazoria County, Texas, and being situated in re, Reserve L of the final replat of Crystal Lake Subdivision Section One. A subdivision per plat or map recorded in volume nineteen, pages seven eleven through seven fourteen, Brazoria County map records, said zero point zero zero one nine acre parcel being out of and part of a tract described as reserves A through M in a conveyance to Crystal Lake Property Owners Association, Inc., recorded under Brazoria County Clerk's File Number nine eight zero four four nine one six, dated October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-eight, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take actions as necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain.
So moved.
Okay, uh, there was a motion in a second.
Was this item in the budget?
Okay. Uh, just to fill council in, I, I'm gonna explain number ten and number eleven simultaneously, cause they're both acquiring property from the Crystal Lake Homeowners Association. Uh, these are the last two parcels actually required for the Hughes Ranch, uh, Road Improvement Project. And, uh, as you saw, that this is a, this particular, uh, piece of property is a very small tract, it was a, a total of, uh, it's zero, zero zero one nine, point zero zero one nine acre, so it's very small. And, uh, the total compensation for this is actually a to, a total of sixty-two dollars for this parcel of property. Uh, we've actually been working with the Homeowners Association, because this is what we call a friendly condemnation. The bylaws of the, of the HOA are requiring that we actually go through the eminent domain process. We've actually worked with them and negotiated an agreement with respect to both these acquisitions that we're gonna present. Um, the next one is actually a slightly larger piece, but it's still a small piece of property. But the amount of compensation is gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars in that case, and it's because it's for improvements that are in the existing, uh, that are on their property now, and then once the right of way comes through, there's gonna be some landscaping, uh, fencing, and irrigation improvements that they need to be compensated for, and so, uh, that number will be a little bit higher. But in both instances, these are friendly condemnations that we're working with the, um, uh, that we've negotiated an agreement with the HOA. So.
Darren, are we able to do the legal work within your department for these eminent domain proceedings, or do you have to enlist outside counsel?
Well, in, in this case, uh, there's outside counsel who's handled all the eminent domain, domain matters. These don't cost really anything. I mean, uh, the, the, the negotiation amount is what it is, and there will be a hearing, the biggest cost in these hearings is really gonna end up being paying the special commissioners, which typically ranges from two hundred and fifty to five hundred dollars per commissioner for the hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, and of course, we have the other costs, the, the appraisals had to be performed, and so we have an appraiser's cost and things of that, that nature. So, uh, but in these cases, the appraiser does not have to attend the hearing, since we've agreed to it. Again, this is, uh, this is for, uh, just item number ten, and I'll read into the record number eleven after council takes action on this item.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I guess the question, right now, there, there's crews out there doing the water, water line relocation, when, what's the general timing on when the construction will start?
With regards to Hughes Ranch Road, that project is actually a, um, partnership with Techstock through the eighty-twenty split. We're actually working with HGAC and Techstock to try and accelerate that project and move it up a fiscal year. That's where we're at right now. Currently, right now, it'd be scheduled in, um, fiscal year nineteen. Uh, we're trying to move it up to this fiscal year, um, as we are wanting to time that construction with, uh, the toll road and also Smith Ranch Road as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion to second on the floor, Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving on to new business item number eleven, uh, Mr. Koker?
Yes. Uh, yes, I'd recommend a motion, um, for, to approve resolution number two thousand seventeen dash two thirty-one, a resolution of the city council, city of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title to certain property for the Hughes Ranch Road Improvement Project, Cullen Parkway to Smith Ranch Road, being a zero point zero three three one, uh, of one acre, one thousand four hundred and forty-two square feet, parcel of land located in the HTMBRR Company Survey, Abstract Number five oh six, Brazoria County, Texas, and being situated in Reserve A of the final plat of Crystal Lake Subdivision Section One. A subdivision per plat or map recorded in volume nineteen, pages seven eleven through seven fourteen, Brazoria County map records, said point zero three three one acre parcel being out of and part of a tract described as reserves A through M in a conveyance to as reserves A through M in a conveyance to Crystal Lake Property Owners Association, Inc., recorded under Brazoria County Clerk's File Number 98044916, dated October 21st, 1998, for the construction and maintenance of water, sewer, drainage and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or his designee and other city officials to take such actions as necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase or by the exercise of power of eminent domain.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Any comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion to second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right. Councilmember Carbone, will you please present item number 12, new business item number 12 for our consideration?
Thank you. Consideration and possible action, resolution R2017-229, so moved. Second.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Staff report.
So as part of our capital improvement program, we added a significant set of projects in an established neighborhood of East Orange and Old Alvin. East Orange work itself is well underway and I believe going well, not only the road but the drainage. This is a separate segment but related and it's for Old Alvin widening. And this picks it up basically from just south of that town ditch up to McCard Road. Make it a consistent profile and a nice new safe road with a lot more capacity. So I got good pricing, worked with Angel Brothers, I believe they did John Lizer for us before, and recommend your positive consideration.
Does that complete staff report?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from council?
Just one. I know we had some minor concerns with traffic control in that area during the first section. So if we can get with Angel Brothers early, note that there's a fair amount of sensitivity from the neighborhood, particularly coming out of the west side of Lexington, Alvin. And I know since we're, that the construction timeframe is January 18th to December 18th and so we're maybe most of the time in the, in the school year. So if we can just let them know, it was an issue with the first one, if we can be more sensitive to it in the second phase.
Yes, sir, we'll work through that. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion to second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to our final agenda item under new business, item number 13. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2017-237, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second on the floor. Staff report.
So as part of our adopted 1819 budget, 1718 budget, we had a series of fleet replacements. We looked at those and are recommending proceeding with first tranche of those, 25 vehicles. We're getting those through the state buy board and this gets us police replacements in addition to some other vehicles. We'll come back probably after the first of the year with another set as we get into the budget a little bit deeper. But it's pretty important we get going and get these orders so we can get these replacements in place.
Does that complete staff report?
It does.
Any comments from council?
So we have nothing here local?
Best pricing for us is to get them off the buy board. I mean, that's what we've been doing them and works well on several levels for us.
Okay. So I didn't know if there was anybody that would bid on it at the local level.
Any other comments?
At some point in the past, and as Bob's walking up to the podium, I think, I think we've reached out to some local, local firms. While let Bob speak to that.
We did. The difficulty in trying to buy it local is the equipment packages where under the cooperative, we can essentially build a vehicle as we want it, you know, option by option and have it priced accordingly at the volume discounts afforded by the cooperative. So the time before that we reached out locally to try to get a comparative, we got very, very little response. And the response that we did get from local were 20 to 25% higher in pricing for comparable units.
Go ahead.
Quick question, in terms of the outfitting, have we got that figured out?
Yes, sir. We, the vendor that we used last year, Lone Star, they've got a pretty established relationship, especially now with Salisbury Ford. And they're pretty much sitting on go because there's good coordination between Salisbury Ford on the equipment to be provided and they're coordinating the timing so that they'll be, they'll have the aftermarket equipment when the vehicle hits the ground.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none, we have a motion to second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordino?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving back to mayor and council issues for future city council agendas, do we have anything that we want to add to any future? I had one question with regards to the water bill. Do we plan on setting it up to where you can do recurring payments?
I thought we weren't...
Yeah, we're doing, with signatures.
In writing.
Oh, oh, no.
So that when we put it on the agenda, it'll be on the agenda like the item was the same.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Well, I did want to say this. Thank you all, thank you council for bearing with me for my first meeting and I'll go ahead and adjourn, no, we get to do two more. I'll adjourn this meeting at 8:56.